All right, welcome to Inside Politics, our weekly podcast on two or three things you need to know about San Antonio politics. I'm Greg Jefferson, politics editor of the San Antonio Express News, and I'm joined today by City Hall reporter Megan Rodriguez.
Hello.
And our special guest, District Seven Councilwoman Marina Gavito.
Oh, pardon me.
Alterate Gavito, welcome.
Thanks, thanks for having me.
Oh, sure. So, we had booked you a couple of weeks ago, but last week, something weird happened to an ordinance you were behind that would have made illegal in the city, animal abandonment. Now, to me, I think I assumed it was already illegal to abandon an unwanted pet. So, before we get to the controversy involving the mayor, kind of walk me through that ordinance and how it came about, because this was based on a policy proposal of yours.
Yeah, that's right. So, a while back, there's a couple of my neighborhoods in District Seven that have a lot of peacocks or PFO. And so, what we had seen happen was an unlicensed vendor came in with a trailer and was throwing all these peacocks in the back of the trailer. Neighborhood was in uproar. So, I filed a CCR that basically kind of treat peacocks like we do deer here in the city limits, whereas only a licensed vendor can remove them, right? And in that, we also said, you also can't pick up and abandon peacocks in parks and stuff, because they are an invasive species, right?
They're also mean.
They are also beautiful.
Actually, they are. I live, I live just a couple of blocks from that neighborhood, one of those neighborhoods. And so, we'll drive through there every now and then, just to have a look at them. But yeah, you don't want to, you don't want to hang with a peacock. They're feisty and they're often in very bad moods.
Yes, yeah. And there's squeals and all this kind of stuff. And so, you know, but oftentimes with CCRs, there's a collaboration process with council members, there's a collaboration process with city departments. And Animal Care Services new director, John Gary, came to us and said, hey, can we tack onto your CCR and make abandonment of animals, all animals, throughout the city, basically illegal, that we can't do that here?
Were you aware that that was, that there was no city?
I wasn't. It is basically an outdated ordinance, right? Now, in Texas, under Texas law, it is illegal to abandon animals, but usually you only get cited if that animal causes injury or whatever. Here-
Or was injured or something.
Or was injured, yeah. Here, what we're saying is that the actual act of abandoning an animal, you're going to get fined for, you know? And, I mean, we've seen that unfortunately in San Antonio, people abandoning litters of puppies on the street or in an HEB parking lot. And so, we needed to get serious about it. Obviously, you all know that we have stray dog problem here and just stray animal problem here in San Antonio. So, this was a way to get more serious about it. And so, said, hey, can we tack on this ordinance to your CCR? And I was like, yeah, sure. This makes sense. Let's do it and get it done.
Were there any concerns that you had about that being added and brought in, just because it had already kind of gone through the communication process with, there'd already been a town hall very focused on peacocks? And then it kind of grew more and went to city council without having really gone to the public again with like, hey, this is actually what we're looking at now?
Yeah, you know, well, I wasn't concerned about it. You know, they had briefed all the council members about it. This is kind of a no brainer, you know, where we, nobody should be abandoning animals in the city unless they want to get fined, you know? And so, this was, you know, just going through the process of a CCR. And so, you know, we were excited that it was going to get, that it was on the agenda last Thursday to actually finalize it. Let's move forward with this policy and let's get it done. So, yeah, we were surprised it was taken off.
So, yeah, so it, yeah, it was, it was supposed to go to a vote on September the 4th. It did not, because as we learned, the day of what was supposed to have been the vote that Mayor Gina Ortiz Jones had approached city manager Eric Walsh the day before and asked that it be removed, because, why? What was your understanding of why she withdrew it?
You know, I'm hearing some of this secondhand, but from, from my understanding and in conversations with my colleagues, it was that she wanted the new council members to have a chance to weigh in on it. You know, my pushback to that is like, when I was a new council member, there were items that were already being worked on. And, I mean, in City Hall, what happens all the time is that you just get briefed on the subject. You get briefed on the subject, you form an opinion about it, and then, and then you formulate your vote, you know? And so, why we wouldn't just be okay for the new council members to get briefed on it is beyond me, but-
Were they briefed? Do you know?
Yeah, I talked to some of the new council members and my understanding, they were briefed.
Were they ready to vote?
Yeah, they were ready. I mean, this is a huge problem in so many districts, right? And so, they're ready to get tough on people abandoning animals.
Now, did Mayor Jones let you know what she was doing or no?
No.
How'd you find out?
I got a call from city staff that Wednesday evening, saying, hey, this hasn't happened. There, she's pulling the item. At first, I thought she was pulling the item for discussion. I was like, okay, fair. Make sure you have people ready. They're like, no.
But that means like, you could pull it, the council will discuss it, but there would be a vote?
Yes.
In the kind of situation you're talking about.
And that, and that happens all the time, right? If, if we want to still work through something during a session, you can pull it, ask questions, have a discussion, and then still vote on it. That absolutely happens all the time. And then, when, in that conversation, then I understood she was withdrawing it completely. And I was just like, why? Like, that makes zero sense, so.
And from getting comment from the mayor, I will say, kind of her rationale behind some of this is kind of going back to a separate fight over the city's, what they're called council consideration requests, or CCRs. They are kind of the beginning part of a policymaking procedure. You file them when you want to get the ball rolling on an item, and it kind of goes through different committees and gets a lot of discussion, gets kind of shaped by the city before it comes to a vote like we were seeing. And so, that was the process that you kind of kicked off last year and, and we were seeing the vote come. But, the mayor had tried to unilaterally make a lot of changes recently to that CCR process, backed down on most of those changes, like things like having the city manager sign off and having a preliminary like legal review of the matter. She backed down, said, we'll talk about that more next year. But seems to be keeping hold of one of the items that she had originally said, which was anybody who had filed a CCR before, like, the new council's tenure, you're going to have to refile or, it's kind of unclear, I feel like, a little bit, because like, at one point, she was telling, her chief was telling us, well, it's just going to be up to governance to decide. And I know that you all also got an email saying, actually, like, tell us if you're pursuing these or not, and here's your deadline, and within a couple of days of like, which CCRs you want to pursue. And so, it seems like it's been a little bit of internal chaos of figuring out what the next steps are for these policies.
Yeah, you know, I completely agree with what you said in that CCR meeting.
Which you were a part of forcing, of getting a discussion on the books. You were one of three council members who pushed to have a meeting brought forward to the public so it wasn't just unilateral changes, y'all were pushing back against that.
That's, that's right. Yeah. And I mean, I think of our CCRs, our council consideration requests, is council members ticketing system, right? This is how we process our work, right? And usually, when you bring forward a CCR proposal, it's not perfect, but that is the magic of the process, right? Maybe District Five says, hey, can we think about it this way or whatever, just like with my senior assistance pilot program, right? I said, hey, there has to be a way that we can help our seniors or disabled community with code compliance issues rather than ticketing them. And we discussed it and we made it right altogether, you know? And, and this is a collaborative effort. And so, in that meeting, I talked about our existing CCRs, because one of the things that I've been working on for a while is cluster mailbox theft. You know, those cluster mailboxes are those big mailboxes with multiple residents' mailboxes in them, and they are getting broken into left and right. And it's causing homeowners' associations, neighborhood associations to spend $6,000 to $10,000 to fix them. It is a federal, it is under federal jurisdiction, but we were trying to see what we could do to help out at the local level. So, we had a partnership with CPS Energy to install, they call it Ansel Lighting, all night security lighting around them. Again, we've been working on this for months. And, and so, to just kind of wipe it away makes no sense, you know? Costs taxpayers more dollars, right? Because of all the effort that's been working on it. And so, you know, during that meeting, I brought up, hey, our existing CCRs should, you know, still be considered. And we were all kind of under the understanding that they would be, you know, and then also seeing emails from the chief of staff that they would be. So, we were a little surprised that, that that's not the case anymore.
So, how many, how many council consideration request memos? And these are, these are like, like Megan said, these are kind of the starting point for policymaking for city council. Like, how many of these older CCRs do you have that could be kind of treated in the same way now, where if they, if they just won't make it to a vote, or if they do, it's because you and two other council members have to force it on the agenda?
Yeah, you know, I mean, our team, we're only filing a CCR on, on the residents' behalf, right? If we're getting that request from, from residents, then, then I'm going to do the work and, and get it done. So, I mean, we don't have, you know, we have one about public works reset, right? Because we have a lot of residents complaining about the construction and, and lack of quickness around that. We have our cluster mailbox theft one. This one, this, the PFO one was literally on its last leg. If it had just stuck to mind, it would have been done a long time ago. Again, we collaborated with ACS to add this on. So, you know, I would say there's, there's a handful, but, but you don't want to be dismissive of that work, because it is good work, you know? And so-
I also want to just add that the mayor, early on, when we were kind of talking about like what, how many policies there were still kind of in the works from last time around, mentioned that there were a little over 30. I believe that also, the chief had sent out a list to all the council members of there being closer to 50 of these that are kind of still in the works and in the process. And so, those are kind of the ones that we could maybe see affected. But, again, it's, it's something that I think is going to be kind of coming to the governance committee pretty soon here. The committees have just recently been established, and those, these issues are probably going to be discussed at that level.
Yeah. Now, Mayor Jones, in July, started talking about, well, I mean, she introduced in a memo to city council, the changes to this kind of policymaking process. That being, you know, basically, it's got to be, you've got to have the city manager, the city attorney's office signing off, you know, several other, other new kind of rules governing this. Now, had she talked to you or any other council members that you're aware of before making those changes about, hey, how do you make policy at city council?
No, she, she had not. And so, we were all kind of caught off guard by that memo, and, which is why I joined forces with Councilwoman Terry Castillo and Councilwoman White.
How did that come about? So, what you did was, the three of you, there's a mechanism, I believe it's under the city charter, right, where you, three council members can force an item onto an agenda, or force a special meeting, and that's what you did with Councilman White and Terry Castillo. How did that, how did that come about?
Yeah, but you're right. There's a tool that we use called the three signature memo, where we can push something for, to get on the agenda. And we saw this, and we were caught off guard, quite frankly, and said, hey, this is our process to get something done. You know, we're going to take issue with some of the proposed changes, you know? One of the big ones was kind of running things through her, her chief of staff. And, you know, there needs to be an understanding that the city councils, the order directors, essentially, for, for the city, we report to our residents and our residents only. We don't report to the mayor. We don't have to get stamps of approval for getting something done on our residents' behalf, actually completed. So, so, yeah, we took issue with that, and we used that tool of the three signature memo too.
Did you consider it overreach on her part, the mayor?
You know, I definitely didn't appreciate being surprised by a memo. It would have been nice, and, and this was something that we had talked about, to have a conversation. Let's have, let's have a working session. Let's let her know, hey, this is how things operate at City Hall. Now, that doesn't mean that there's not room for improvement. Absolutely, there's probably room for improvement, but like, this is, this is our operating model. Let's work through it first before we start offering suggestions.
And how did you all three, again, decide to come together again and, and ask that this animal abandonment item be added? It's, it's going to be on Thursday's agenda. You three asked the city manager to place it on there, and he, he agreed and went ahead and put it onto the agenda. I guess, what, what went into play when deciding, you know what, we're going to push back again?
Well, really, I mean, I think that it's, it is a pretty cool trio of Councilman Mark and his political leanings, Councilwoman Terry Castillo and her political leanings, and he kind of smack dab in the middle.
Right at the left here, yeah.
Yeah. Because you know what? I think it shows that this is not about politics, right? This is about us trying to get stuff done for our residents. And so, on Wednesday, yeah, I let him know I was pretty upset when I found out the item was getting pulled and-
Let the council colleagues?
My council colleagues know that I was upset about the item getting pulled, and so made it happen.
Now, you know, also, apart from, you know, the three of you kind of covering the political spectrum, and by the way, Democrat or Republican, you?
Me, I've been a lifelong Democrat.
All right. Conservative Democrat? Like, old, old school Texas Democrat, like hardly existed anymore, or?
Well, I mean, I will say, though, a lot of the things that we take up at City Hall are nonpartisan. I always tell residents, you know, a pothole's not Democrat or Republican, it's a pothole. I got that actually from John Kirch.
I was gonna say, I feel like it is encouragingly right.
I think it's fully great.
Now, so, apart from, you know, kind of covering like all of the political ground, also, you're, this is very young city council, and the fact that, that the three of you kind of count as senior statespeople is kind of interesting. You are, right? I mean, is this, is this kind of the, the, the senior strata of city council kind of rising up against the mayor? Like, do you feel like you're having to protect turf that you believe the city councils against the mayor?
I wouldn't say it's against the mayor or rising up against the mayor. I think that this is just our push to make sure that our residents' voices are heard, you know? And, and whether, if, if she wants to unilaterally change the CCR process, we are going to push back, because this is our mechanism to get stuff done for our residents. Whether, you know, whether it's this animal abandonment issue, we're going to push back, because this is a no brainer in San Antonio.
Right. Now, you succeeded, to go back to the whole policymaking CCR thing, the three of you managed to force a special meeting with, with council and the mayor to discuss this. In that meeting, she accused you of lying in a, in one of your council consideration requests, or specifically, a news release about it, having to do, I believe it was with city funding for some, some additional transportation services to a senior center. And I think what she accused you of being, of misrepresenting was having checked in with the city manager, to have gotten his sign off, which is, which was already required under, under city ordinance. Did you do it? Did you, did you lie about that?
You know, no, there was no lying. It was such an unfortunate turn of events and very disheartening that she, she portrayed it like that. So, when I, you know, I guess it was maybe her first week on the job, I had filed a CCR, I would say, you know, feel-good CCR. We, we have all known that more seniors need to get to our senior centers, right? Got my council colleagues' signature on it and filed it. Now, the agreement with our city manager, Eric Walsh, was always like, hey, for controversial ones or ones that are going to cost the city a lot of money, I will absolutely give you a heads up on a CCR. But, we're not having to like, ask for permission for breathing, you know, right? We're trying to get stuff done on our residents' behalf. So, I did file that CCR on a Friday, and then was told on Monday that she had issue and that she basically issued a press release saying that my CCR was invalid. And I was like, what? And so, it's just really frustrating, because if I had filed that CCR three weeks before under Nuremberg, it would have been totally fine. I would have probably gotten a call from Mayor Nuremberg and said, awesome job, love the idea, you know? And now, you know, here we are three weeks later, and it's totally different. And so, I picked up the phone and called her, and then I texted her, and then later on that evening, she called me back and, and I said, hey, you know, I'm just kind of wondering what is happening here? Like, why are you issuing a press release saying my CCR is not valid? And she said, well, in, in the template, it says, you know, in coordination with the city manager. And I said-
I think she's talking about on the CCR, right, the boilerplate language that's on there?
Yes, the boilerplate language, you're right. And I said, that's totally fine. And I respect that if she wants to follow that process, I completely respect that. You know, that, again, how we were three weeks ago under Mayor Nuremberg, like, we're just focused on getting things done, right? Obviously, in a orderly fashion. Here, all of a sudden, it was an issue. But again, I respected that she wanted to make that change, but I was just like, could have just called me, you know, and said, hey, can you refile it after you talked to the city manager, you know? I would have gladly done it. And so, you know, at that time, I also let her know, she's like, well, you know, we may face some legal risks and, and that kind of stuff. And if, if I just called you, there wouldn't have been documentation. I was like, there could have been. We could have emailed each other saying, per our conversation, you know, this and the other. And she said, well, how come, you know, you only put a eight mile radius, you know, maybe in District Two, it's a 10 mile radius. And I explained to her, I said, that's actually the beauty of a CCR. Like, I'm putting forward this idea, we're going to beat it up, we're going to discuss it, and we're going to come out with great policy on the other side.
And that radius was just for like, how, like, large of a radius the transportation could be provided for to a senior center?
Yes, that's right. So, right now, there's a five mile radius where the city of San Antonio provides transportation to residents within the five mile radius of a senior center to get them to the senior center. I was proposing expanding it to eight miles, right? Could be 10 miles in District Two, I don't know, you know? But again, that's the beauty of a CCR, is that we collaborate, we beat this up together, and we create good policy for our residents. So, again, it was a feel-good one, but for her to say I was lying or mistruth was just really unfortunate, because I'm like, it's just called working together, you know? And, and again, if she wanted that process to, to change, it was as simple as saying, hey, you know, I'm the mayor now, I would like it for it to be this way, can you go ahead and refile it? And I would have, you know, but instead, it was like uproar and a press release, and it's just, it, it doesn't create the foundation for working well together.
Am I remembering correctly? I think that her news release came after your offices, right? It was like, basically, her kind of publicly retracting it, essentially.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
So, you've got, coming up this Thursday, you've got a vote, at least for now, anyway, on the animal abandonment ordinance. What are you expecting that meeting to be like?
Interesting.
Right. I mean, what are you, what are you anticipating coming from the mayor?
You know, I haven't thought about the stance she will take on it. I will say, you know, I've been working with my colleagues closely, and all of us know this is an issue, and all of us want this policy to be enacted.
Right. Now, kind of describe, step back a little bit, and just describe the tone at city council, not just on the dais, but in, you know, one-on-one interactions with, with other council members. Because like I said, this is very new council. We've got, what, four, five new members? And they're all super young. How, how is the tone change from under Ron Nuremberg's last term as mayor? What's different?
Well, you know, I think that there was, there was definitely more of a spirit of just getting stuff done with, with Nuremberg. There's, there's a lot of, there is a lot of opportunities that we have as a city. I mean, we have, you know, not only myself, but my council colleagues, we have a backlog of items that need to get done. I mean, our residents, you know, are expecting us and holding us accountable to get stuff done. And so, you know, there was that spirit of collaboration of, like I said, if I had filed my senior center CCR, I probably would have gotten a phone call from him, awesome idea, love it, let me know how I can support you, you know? The tone is different now. I just, you know, it's, you know, I'm not one for all of this combativeness, you know? I, I think that as city council, we need to be aligned and, you know, making, making sure that we're making our city better together. And so, but I, I'm pretty close to my council colleagues. I'm constantly having conversations with them, letting them know, hey, this is, this shouldn't have been a fight, but this is what we're doing, you know? This is the intent of what we're doing, and making sure that they're all on board.
Now, one, about two weeks ago, you had a council vote on the term sheet for, for the Spurs Arena.
Right.
Big part of Project Marvel, which is the city's plan, sports and entertainment district downtown. The, the vote was pretty, I mean, I wouldn't say lopsided, but you know, four, seven, it was, it was just a hair short of decisive, right?
Yeah.
But, it was a very acrimonious week. And you had the mayor taking a very strong position against approving kind of this framework for a financing deal for the arena. And, you know, she crashed Mark White's budget town hall to talk about Project Marvel and finance, you know, public financing for the Spurs Arena. She crashed the, a pro Project Marvel news conference. By the way, were you there?
I wasn't at the news conference. I was at Councilman White's budget town hall, though.
Okay, yeah. What was that like? What was, what was the atmosphere when? Describe it for me.
So, I was sitting next to Councilwoman Terry Castillo, and then my daughter's on the other side.
What, what were you doing there? So, every council member has like, during budget season, they all have their, you know, in their districts, yeah? And like, like normally, you wouldn't expect to see other council members hanging out at other council members' town halls. Why were you there?
Not necessarily. I mean, I remember when I was hosting one of my budget town halls during my first term, Councilman John Kirch was there. And I appreciated that about him, you know, like, he was going to learn and listen what's going on in the rest of the city. So, that was something that I had mentioned to my team, like, hey, as many of my colleagues' budget town halls I can go to, I'd want to, you know? Again, just to, you know, I know District Seven well, obviously hosted that budget town hall, but I want to also see what's going on in, in the rest of the city too. And so, you know, I'd said, yeah, I can, I can make his work. And so, but during their exchange, it was kind of a mouth dropping moment.
Uh huh.
Yeah. It was, it was, you know, the council person is the one hosting the meeting, right? And so, this is very much their meeting. Usually, it's packed full of residents who are very supportive of the council member and who also want to make sure that their input is heard. And so, it was a lot of confusion. It was a lot of like, what is happening, you know? You know, I would also say it was disrespectful.
Now, this is separate from Project Marvel, which we'll get to in a moment. There's a, there's a really petty and small-minded part of my personality. And I'm just going to let it, I'm going to give it free rein and say, one reason, maybe you're going around to other council members' town hall meetings, is to kind of get acquainted with their constituencies, maybe with a mayoral run at some point in mind. Is that, is that an ambition of yours to eventually run for mayor?
You know, I mean, right now, I'm very focused on serving the residents of District Seven, you know, serving them well, was reelected with 72% of the vote. So, I'm feeling good about making sure that they're supported, and that's really what I'm focused on right now.
Okay. So, not no, but not yes? Okay.
What I'm focused on right now.
All right. Now, back to, back to, back to Project Marvel. So, Mayor Jones, her argument was that you had an economic impact analysis for Project Marvel that didn't actually include, like, the cities, the city commissioned part of the study didn't include the arena. They, they were relying on the Spurs consultant for those numbers. But the consultant, CSL International, it is owned in part by a Spurs investor.
Right.
Six Street Partners, which seems like a bad idea to, at the beginning. So, it kind of, you know, I think she was right. It kind of calls into question the legitimacy of whatever they have to say about an economic impact of, of an arena. And her argument was, hey, why don't we just commission a truly independent one and wait for the results of that? And in the meantime, when, or when we get those, you know, give council members time to have two town halls to talk about the results, to talk about the project, before you agree on this deal framework.
Right.
What's wrong with that? Like, why, like, what, what was the urgency? Why did it have to get done?
Yeah. I want to answer that.
At that point, yeah.
Yeah. I do want to clarify, though, it was actually Councilwoman Terry Castillo who found the CSL alignment on Six Street. Just, because I actually thought it was a good one, that Councilwoman Terry Castillo brought up. For me, the urgency to get it done then was so that the residents could know who was contributing what when they go vote in November, right? So, they, I wanted them to be very clear on what the city's contributions were going to be, what the Spurs contributions were going to be, and what the county's contributions were going to be, you know? And, and in terms of an economic analysis, you know, a lot of these are projections on top of projections on top of projections. Like, if we build a hotel room here and charge X, Y, and Z, then maybe someone's going to be able to make so much amount. It is an important data point, but to me, it was a data point. What I based the decision off of was any impact to residents, any risk to our city, and also to what the Spurs were going to be contributing, which was a whole lot more than any of us anticipated. So-
Now, you were, I understand from a reporter who covered the Spurs campaign kickoff on Saturday, this is for the county vote, the venue tax election, you were there. And I think you were one of two council members on hand?
I saw Councilman Mark White there.
Yeah. So, are you, are you going to be an active part of the campaign?
No.
To get this passed or not?
Well, not that I'm aware of.
I'd say that would be up to you.
Yeah, no, you know, we were told about the campaign kickoff, and honestly, Councilman Mark White and I said, well, let's take our girls there. You know, they have two daughters, we have, I have two daughters, and so-
Yeah. Are you friends?
Yeah, we're friends.
Now, I don't, I assume maybe the mayor was invited- Now, I don't, I, I assume maybe the mayor was invited, but no, she wasn't there, obviously. And she, but she also wasn't at the, the following day. Cops Metro, you know, they had basically a no rally. They've got their own campaign to try to convince voters to reject the venue tax election, at least the portion of it that would pay for, you know, in part the Spurs Arena. She didn't attend that either. What do you think, where do you think the mayor is right now in, in supporting this venue tax election or not?
Yeah.
And I, I'd be surprised if you talked to her about it, but maybe just.
I have not talked to her about it. But based off of some of the clippings I've seen, you know, I'm not, I, I wouldn't put her fully in the supportive camp. I guess that's about all I have to say. And that's just, you know, her interviews on news stations and stuff, you know, so.
Do you think, does she deserve credit for what the Spurs have agreed to contribute to the community benefits agreement? This is, you know, they've, they've agreed to put up more than, it started out at 60 million. I don't recall offhand what they bumped it up to, but that's 75. So that's money that the Spurs is dedicating over a 30-year period largely to early childhood and pre-K services. And that seems like it's the result of kind of her, you know, fairly tough stance she's taken. Doesn't she deserve some kind of credit for that?
No, I'm not saying she doesn't deserve credit. I'm saying that was a push from my council colleagues and I as a whole, you know? I will say, Councilwoman Terry Castillo wrote for, I think, an op ed for the Express News, calling for the community benefits agreement. I know I talked to Councilwoman Dr. Sakor several times, like, hey, let's keep pushing, you know? There, there's a way. So there was a lot of us on the background who said, we're not quite done with the community benefits agreement, let's keep pushing. And, and so I see it as, as a large majority of us seeing that as, as a place we could push. Now, you know, none of us were focused on, well, you know, it wasn't a hill to die on on what that community benefits agreement could be used for. Some said early childcare, you know, some said affordable housing. But I, I think how it's flushed out has been great, 75 million towards our community that wasn't there before. And, and, and a way that we can make it work, you know, over these upcoming years.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just, it's still along with this, but I mean, Project Marvel, Spurs Arena, these are not the only massive topics y'all are all going to have to be kind of collaborating on. But already you and a couple of other council members have been kind of pushing back. I guess what do you kind of think the relationship is going to be like with you and the mayor? Do you think that kind of these early issues are going to kind of continue throughout the next four years?
You know, I hope not. You know, I feel that some of these headlines are distracting, you know? And again, I feel like there's so much work that needs to be done. And, and so, you know, I, I want us all to work collaboratively to, to get stuff done.
So after, so you had this, this kind of climactic vote on, on the, the term sheet for the Spurs financing deal. And if I'm, if, I'll just, embarrass me if you have to. But I think like the day of that vote, that night, didn't she have, didn't she attend one of your town hall meetings on the budget? How'd that go? What was the tone?
Fine, you know, yes, I hosted my budget town hall that evening, so it was a long day. But we got really great, we had great attendance, great feedback. I shared the floor with her and.
Did she, did she talk about Project Marvel?
She did not talk about Project Marvel.
What'd she talk about?
Just, I think the importance of the budget process and making sure, you know, residents' voices are heard.
What did you take from that? Because I mean, it was, it was a very, you know, that was kind of the, the, that vote was the capstone for a very combative week. Like, we haven't seen at city hall in years.
Yeah.
Years and years, 20 years. So the tone, you might have been, you might have had a little anxiousness or, who knows? Maybe, maybe you were ready for a fight going into that town hall meeting. Were you? Did you, what were your anticipations?
I mean, I can't say that, you know, that we saw what happened at Councilman White's budget town hall, right? We have to take stuff like that into consideration, but, but, you know, it isn't going to stop me from sharing the microphone with her and, and making sure that I was respectful and giving her the floor.
Now, so that seemed to, you know, that seemed to kind of usher in a week or two of just kind of calm, quiet. I mean, like, I don't know if that's how it appeared behind the scenes, was it? I mean, things seemed to quiet down, like the, the temperature in the room seemed to have dropped considerably. Did it? I mean, in one-on-one meetings, did it get any better than it had been before that, that big vote?
You know, so I only, my last one-on-one with her was prior, I think a day or two prior to the vote. So I haven't met with her since.
Okay. Interesting, what, what was that like, that meeting with, two days before the vote with her?
It was actually the day after Councilman White's town hall, so a little awkward.
And what, what did you talk about? Like, was she, like, what, what, what was your, what was your objective in that meeting and what was her objective?
You know, honestly, it was very transactional. Here's the committees you're assigned, da, 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 da. Are you still where you are at with the Spurs vote on Thursday? And I said, absolutely. And this is what my residents are asking me to do and so.
So is in that meeting, you found out you did not get any chairmanships?
I think the memo had come out, I believe, like the Friday before, so.
Yeah, it came out a little bit before that and, and so everyone was kind of informed through that instead of the conversations. Had you all not had any conversations before, I guess, of like even an inkling of what that was going to look like?
Well, so in my very first one-on-one with her, I've had to, she asked me, hey, what committees do you want to serve on? And I was like, oh, okay, surprised she was asking. So I had let her know and, but I didn't get any of them.
Which ones had you asked for?
I was looking for economic development, workforce, obviously a seat at public safety, on public safety. And governance, right? Because usually those are the more senior council members.
Go, go ahead.
Since you weren't able to kind of get those, those seats and of course, you and, and the others who were kind of pushing back against her, didn't get chairmanships, though you all are more seasoned than some of the folks who did get chairmanships on these committees. I guess what kind of effect does this have on, on your relationship? I know I've been asking about the relationship here.
Well, I mean, let's, I mean, is it, like, the starting point is, like, do you consider a retaliation for having forced, you know, a public meeting on changes she wanted to make to policymaking? Was it revenge?
I mean, retaliation or not, honestly, I don't care. I'm, I'm just focused on getting the work done for residents. I'm focused on, you know, whether it is public works reset, whether it's cluster mailbox theft, whether it's animal abandonment. I'm, I am just laser focused on getting work done and also joining forces with my colleagues to, to move our city forward. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I just really don't have time for back and forth.
Now, to, to anybody outside of city hall, what is, what do you see as the, like, the value of a chairmanship? Like, why would you want to be a, a city council committee chairman?
Well, I think that, you know, usually you bring in your experience, right? You bring in knowledge and experience of how city hall works to the chairmanship position. Now, I wouldn't say that they're end all be all. You know, there are ways that we, me and my team can still be, absolutely still be active in committees that we're not assigned to. So it's going to take a lot more legwork from my team and I, but it's, it's not, you know? If the, if the goal was trying to oust me from it, it's not happening.
Yeah. So, so we, we had this period, to go back just to a couple of minutes ago, we had this period where it seems like things were quieting down. Things were maybe going to straighten out a little bit. And then your, your ordinance was pulled last week. Is that a signal to you that now things really, like, they're going to be as testy as they were before the, the Spurs vote?
You know, it's, it's definitely a head scratcher. I mean, and even talking about committee assignments, you know? It's, it's hard for me to make sense of, you know, we have these new council members, they could have easily gotten briefed on this ordinance, which they did, of animal abandonment. Because that briefing happened all the time. Because, you know, I think part of her argument was, hey, new council members may not know. Okay, well, it's a briefing, right? But yet to assign them to chairmanships when they don't have the experience, you're just like, trying to make sense of that.
Yeah. Okay, so I always do this, I say last, this is, this is our last question and then I have like half a dozen. This, I'm going to take care of it by giving Megan our last question and that's, I'm done.
So with this vote, since we've just, that's our last topic that we've been kind of talking about. I know that you said that you think it'll be an interesting moment in, in this conversation next week. I guess though, I guess how do you feel like the members will end up kind of leaning? I, I know that you said you feel like it's a no brainer, but since it is a topic that she's kind of made controversial by pulling and, and saying that it needs to go to governance, I guess, do you see a possibility in which this just doesn't move ahead?
You know, I think that this is the beauty of working well with your colleagues is that I've talked to a lot of them. You know, I've talked to a majority of them and all of them are like, this is a problem in our districts, you know? And we, we need to come down on people who abandon animals. So I think there's more than enough of us to say that on Thursday.
All right. Councilwoman Alred T. Gavito, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Oh, you're welcome. And thank you for joining us. If you have not signed up for Inside Politics newsletter, I mean, I don't know what to say. It's like, this, it's been a year now. Drop to show notes, click, sign up and just do it. So thanks a lot and we will see you next week.